It became easier.
I'll call to order the reorganization meeting of the Chisholm Board of Education, ISD 695. Want to take one?
Director Raja Sardar?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Karati Simon?
Here.
Director Lappi?
Yeah.
Director Raja?
Here.
Chair.
Here. Approving of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve this agenda?
All motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Director Raja Sardar. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Organizational meeting action items. Item number one. Nominations are now in order for the office of board chair. I nominate Mark Casey.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations for board chair are closed. And do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
All, all motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Director Raja. Second by Director Karati Simon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nomination is now in order for the office of clerk. I'll make the motion to nominate Director Raja Sardar.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations for clerk are closed. Motion was by?
I'll make the motion.
Karati Simon.
I'll support.
Support by Director Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Director Raja Sardar is the Chisholm School Board Clerk. Nominations are now in order for treasurer.
I nominate Director Rice.
Director Rice is nominated.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Nominations for treasurer are closed. Motion on the floor is? By? By Director Raja. And the second was by Director Karati Simon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Director Rice is the Chisholm School Board Treasurer. Nominations are now in order for the Chair Pro Tem. Current pro tem is Jackie Karati Simon.
I'll nominate Jackie.
I'll support that.
Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations for Chair Pro Tem are closed. And we have the motion is by? Director Lappi. And the second was by Director Raja. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Director Karati Simon is the Chair Pro Tem. Congratulations. You don't know how.
He's telling you to show up for our meeting.
Uh, nomination is now in order for the clerk pro tem. Current nominee is, shall we?
I nominate Director Lappi for clerk pro tem.
Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? The nominations for clerk pro tem are closed. Motion was by Director Raja. And seconded by Karati Simon. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Director Lappi is the Chisholm School Board Clerk Pro Tem. Congratulations to you. Nominations are now in order for the treasurer pro tem. Current treasurer pro tem is, shall we?
I'll nominate Bob.
Director Raja. Any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Nominations for treasurer pro tem are closed. And the motion was by Director Lappi.
I'll second that motion.
And seconded by Director Karati Simon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Director Raja is the Chisholm School Board Treasurer Pro Tem. Congratulations. Uh, item seven, setting the salaries for the chairperson and director, be it resolved by the school board, independent school district 695 Chisholm. The salaries of the school board members will be $350 per month, payable monthly for regular scheduled board meetings. Chairperson and school board shall be $400 per month, payable monthly for regular scheduled board meetings. $25 per meeting shall be allowed for additional meetings. And do we have a motion?
I'll motion approval.
I'll second that.
Director Raja. Supported by Director Raja Sardar. And it is a election year, so that's, to my understanding, is the only time it can be changed during the election year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Being resolved, the school board, independent school district 695 Chisholm, at the Masawick Tribune, we designated the official newspaper of the school district to publish the proceedings of the meetings of the school board and legal notices and display advertising at the legal rate. The officers are authorized to enter into contract for the same. Do we have a motion?
It's made. Aye.
Director by Karati Simon, support by Director Lappi. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, be resolved by the school board, ISD 695 Chisholm, that the regular school board meetings be held on the second Monday after the first Monday of each month unless otherwise designated. The second meeting will be held two weeks after the first meeting unless that day is a legal holiday. And it will be held on the next day when legal business can be transacted, otherwise, unless otherwise designated. Starting time will be 5:00 PM. Do we have a motion?
Okay.
Director Rice?
Support.
Support by Director Raja. Any other discussion? I guess I'd, I'd like to just throw it out there to the board. Is there any interest in a changing the meetings to Wednesdays due to the fact that there's no activities usually scheduled on Wednesdays?
And maybe an earlier time than Wednesdays? We just weren't sure how that would work, like you said.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't change, I mean, I wouldn't change it. Just, just to accommodate, but I don't have too much stuff on Mondays per se. As opposed to Wednesdays, it kind of sounds a little bit more activity wise, you know, so.
I like Mondays.
Yep, and I, I think what we could do from time to time, providing we give notice, something two hours, we could change those dates if, um, if we need to.
Yeah.
Providing schedules coincide. I know it's, um, for superintendent and others, Mondays get to be a busy day, coming back. Been a long day, so I just thought I'd throw that out there. There is a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, be resolved by the school board, ISD 695 Chisholm, that the business manager be authorized to prepay certain claims to take advantage of discounts. Do we have a motion?
It's made.
Director Karati Simon, support.
Support.
Director Lappi. Any discussion? It doesn't just pertain to take advantage of discounts, does it?
My understanding is this just.
I mean, it's not like a blue light special.
This is saying that we can cut checks and the board retroactively approves some kind of payments here. We should probably update that language.
I like those discounts.
And no late fees.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, appointing board members as representatives, uh.
Number twelve. Eleven is the business manager?
Oh, twelve then, I'm sorry.
Uh, we didn't do number eleven. You did number ten.
I did number ten, oh. Sorry. Be resolved by the school board, independent school district 695 Chisholm, that the business manager be authorized to make payments to the use of electronic fund transfers, otherwise known as EFTs, and shall report the same to the school board each month. Do we have a motion?
All motion.
I'll support.
Supported by Director Raja Sardar. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, there we go. Appointing board members as representatives, uh, just to kind of go through these, this is the Minnesota State High School League representative, Title One Parent Advisory Committee, Community Education Advisory Council, Health and Safety Committee, World's Best Workforce, Finance Committee, and Policy Committee. Currently, uh, Mr. Raja, Director Raja is the MSHSL representative. Director Lappi is Title One Parent Advisory Committee. Director Lappi is Community Ed Advisory Council. Director Rice is Health and Safety Committee. World's Best Workforce is Director Raja Sardar and Director Karati Simon. Finance Committee is Director Casey and Director Raja, and the Policy Committee is Director Rice and Director Lappi. If there is no other changes to those, or somebody wants to switch around, at one time I was thinking that I would like to be on the MSHSL, but it's not such a big deal. I think we could do this with one motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to keep committees as the same by Director Karati Simon. And seconded by Director Rice. Any other discussion?
I, I would like to make the, I would like to make the motion that the chair be the MSHSL representative. That's kind of what we've always done in the past, is the chair's been in that position. And I do think we should switch that committee.
Director Raja, how often have you met?
There's, uh, there's usually two votes that come up through the year. There's a couple of votes, and in the past, I think Bob DiCaro was on there. Thank you, Bob. He always told me, use it to take care of. So there's really nothing.
I haven't heard anything about anything, so I've never met.
Where is that?
High School League, yeah.
Did your name listed on a website?
And more emails coming in.
I could run through and tell you which ones are the work, or you, you, you all, which one actually take a little bit of effort. The High School League is the one.
I, I appreciate the, um, the motion or the move to put the chair on the MSHSL. I suppose, if you wanted, we could put an alternate on there.
Why not? Do that?
And let's just make it not a person, but the chair as alternate. So I make a motion to amend the original motion. Adding the chairperson as an alternate to the MSHSL representative.
I, um, about that Title, uh, Parent Advisory Committee? I don't, I don't recall being on that last year. I remember being on the Early Childhood Committee. Is that, is it renamed? Or?
Yeah, that's right. I thought it was Early Childhood.
Yeah. Did you meet?
Uh, we, we met once last year via Zoom, and then I reached out to, um,
Yes.
I, we were, we wanted to get, um, oh my gosh, I'm blanking. An update from them, and I reached out to her, and, um, I can't think of her name now, it's just, I'm blanking. Don Koski. And about coming to a meeting in January or February. So, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't have to be on that if we don't.
Early, I thought it was called the Early Childhood.
I thought it was always said that.
We have to have a Title One Advisory Committee.
I have no problem being on that, I just wasn't sure what it was. I'm on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Who, who's in charge of that? Like?
Carla.
Carla is mostly.
Okay, I'll reach out to Carla.
I guess I don't know, but that falls in the community yet.
No.
Anyway, but I guess I don't know.
Don was in that meeting too, is that?
Yeah.
That's why you, um, we chose her, because she was a junior.
Yeah.
I did have one meeting, like, before Don took over, yeah. We had more regular meetings with Joanie.
Yeah.
That's why, I mean, not, I knew that, but Don, just like, that's just what it.
So, but Early Childhood falls under Community Ed? Is that what you're saying?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Guess we don't have to change any titles here. Uh, there is a motion to add the chairperson as an alternate for MSHSL. Ask for a second to that amendment.
I'll, I'll second that.
Second by Director Karati Simon. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll add, if, uh, this has, it has nothing to do with the committee, if we ever have a chance to get on the region committee, get a board member on that, we would, I would highly encourage if that one, that open was to run for that position, because it does have a lot of input into tournaments where they're held. Fighting over the youth versus the main, things like that, so. Just, whatever, when that comes up, I don't know when the dates, when either comes up, with the four-year terms, it would be, if there's a chance to get a board member on that, that would be.
But should we also not be adding the Collaboration Committee to this list?
I think he's, um.
Because we are planning to bring to the boards to have that Collaboration Committee be a a continuous thing where we meet quarterly?
I think these are the committees that are required by state.
Oh, to have people named.
Oh, other committees we can.
Are other committees we can take care of at a later date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business before the board on the reorganization meeting? May entertain a motion to close.
I'll make the motion.
Director Raja?
Support.
Support by Director Karati Simon. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time is five twenty-five. I should have said, I should have mentioned that, um, you have in your packet, as you can get it for a regular meeting here. You have in your packet dates of square meetings. And you'll have one that will have to move. At least on the October fifteenth meeting.
Uh huh.
So that has to be moved, do I see that it's Tuesday?
Yeah, um. No, it's, um.
And I, I apologize for going down.
October fifteenth passes because COVID's day.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we, uh, I think we made the motion.
To keep this schedule.
To keep this schedule.
Yeah.
But it's just November eleventh is the only one on here today, except Veterans Day. So that would be the only one that we definitely should schedule.
Well, when it comes, when it comes, we'll, obviously, we'll, we'll have discussion.
Got to do it in enough time, yeah.
Because there are times where, on campus on Tuesday, and listening to the, uh, MS, the seminar on this, a lot of people don't do it the day after. They'll do it at their earliest convenience. Within reason.
On those ones, if you want to, until Wednesday, I can make it send. So just. Those are the ones you'd like to bump, but that would do more. Because I have a conflicting.
That motion, that motion did include our student taxation meeting on December ninth, just wanted to make sure that that's on record. With that said, I will call to order the regular meeting of Independent School District 695 Board Directors. We'll call it these.
Director Raja Sardar?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Karati Simon?
Here.
Director Lappi?
Here.
Director Raja?
Here.
Director Casey?
Here. Uh, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Your recognition of guests and visitors? We have none. Approval of the agenda. May entertain a motion.
What motion approval?
Motion by Director Raja.
Support.
Support by Director Raja Sardar. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, approval of the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three special meeting. Accounts payable for the month of December twenty twenty-three in the amount of $435,000. and payrolls for the month of December twenty twenty-three in the amount of $685,466.73. May entertain a motion.
Support. Shelley, baby.
Motion by Director Lappi, seconded by Director Karati Simon. Any discussion? Minutes appear to be all in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel. Item seven, personnel. Item A, approve the hiring of Ashley Jarman to job number one seventy-five, part-time bus driver effective December twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
So made.
Support.
Motion by Director Lappi, support by Director Raja. Any discussion? I guess maybe I'll ask all.
We're, we're always short of drivers, it's, we're.
But then, but they've started. They're doing okay, and?
Yeah. No.
Who's Jamie?
Any other discussion?
Jamie is a new transfer.
Yeah.
Oh.
No other discussion? May entertain a motion? Oh no, we do have a motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, approve the hiring of Kylie Leila to job number two fifty-six, paraprofessional Von Stephensrod, effective January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Director Karati Simon.
Support.
Support by Director Lappi. Any discussion?
Are we short down there yet?
No, we have some high-needs kids, and we're having some issues making sure that people get their preps. Lunches, and, um, it is due to, without saying too much, because it's student confidential, it's student behaviors and safety. We have to, basic kids are running, and.
Okay.
And it's, uh, mainly that kindergarten area, where we had talked about earlier too.
Okay.
And whatnot, so I'll leave it at that without saying too much, but it is a need.
When they start out, they, they go through some type of orientation?
Yeah, well, they'll, they'll, they'll be, yeah, they'll be, never know, we gotta, at least we'll work on a lot of that with them. But we're, we're also required by law, and we have to provide so much training for parents. Um, you know, within a certain, I can't remember the exact number of days, but it's been, uh, within a month, a couple of months. But we do have to buy training, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the report, uh, approve the request from Adam Schaefer to enroll in the Pathway eighteen program to teach since economics effective spring twenty twenty-four. I had asked, uh, Mark a little bit about this in regards to if we're paying, if we actually pay for the education. But he stated to me that all we're doing is giving this teacher the permission to enroll.
Just like the manager.
And pre-approval for the change, isn't it?
Yeah.
And then when he completes the program, um, he'll be able to teach, the kids will get college credit.
Okay.
Perfect.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support it.
I'll support it.
Raja is supporting it.
This is, I love it. I'm telling you, this is the right thing to do.
Motion by Director Karati Simon, support by Director Raja. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, administrative business, approve the resolution to accept donations. This is Resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash eleven, resolution accepting donation from Nancy and Bill Schleppergrill to support Chelsea Schmidt's classroom.
Oh, is the resolution from January eleventh, twenty twenty-three? I'm sorry, I just changed the date. December eleventh, twenty twenty-three?
Good catch.
That was probably our, that's probably our, we are meeting back here.
It should be December. Should be December eleventh?
December donation.
It was a December donation. Okay.
Twenty twenty-three.
I just changed the board meeting on top to the.
So it's twelve eleven of twenty twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Means resolution, we have.
Director Raja Sardar? Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Karati Simon?
Yes.
Director Lappi?
Yes.
Director Raja?
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. And we thank the Schleppergrills for their donation for that particular classroom.
Who made the motion?
I don't know if we did that, but I'll make the motion. It was just the data that he, that he.
I'll support the motion. I'll support the motion.
Karati Simon.
I got confused. Forgot to say.
Well, as you can tell, I'm confused all day.
Right, it's a month ago.
Give me the word.
Item B, approving the corporate authorization resolution for school district deposit quarters. This includes Park State Bank, PMA Financial Network Incorporated, Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, Robert W. Baird and Company, US Bank Hibbing. And I guess I would like to add that, add to it, and others as needed. Uh, due to the fact that with the school, our activities director is actively seeking large donations. And with some of those donations, they are asking for certain funds to be tossed, deposited into their financial institution. So I guess I would like to add, and others as needed.
So add a numbers thing, see?
As needed, yeah.
I get it.
Makes sense. Um, I'll make the motion.
I'll support. Yeah.
Motion is by Director Karati. Motion is by Director Cry Simon, support by Director Raha. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight C, motion to appoint the following as school district legal counsel for the twenty twenty-four calendar year. That is Squires Walzberger and Mace P.A. And Colosimo, Patchen, Carney, and Brunfeldt Limited.
All motion approval.
Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Support by Director Lappi. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a business, is item D, approving policy five oh one, school weapons. I guess I'd like to take D, E, F, G, H, and I. All as one, in one motion. If there is something that the board member would like to pull, we can do so. Uh, I will read, I will read the policies. Item D is approved policy number five oh one, school weapons. Item E, approved policy five oh two, search of students' lockers, desks, personal possessions, and students' person. Item F, approved policy five oh four, student dress and appearance. Item G, approved policy five oh five, distribution of non-school sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees. Item H, approved policy five oh eight, extended school year for certain students with individualized education programs. And item I, approved policy number five ten, school activities. Entertain a motion to approve those. Director Rice.
Support.
Support by Director Lappi. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, discussion. Any discussion by board members, directors? I guess one thing I would like to do is for Vivian, I lost a board member. So I'd like to just take about ten seconds to silence. Thank you. That board member was Kathy Neiber. She did a nice job over there. Um, she's, she was passionate. Information. You have your enrollment numbers in front of you. They're holding somewhat steady, and we did have an addition just the other day until the fifth grade. During the last month, we had an addition in, I want to say, eighth or ninth grade.
And we, I know we sent a couple of kids today, and I'll see what they kind of study program to, so the numbers drop off at the junior year level. But it's, you know, we lose some kids, but it's probably the best thing for them to make those graduations. So we do encourage that at times.
Some of the kids, I found out, some of the kids misconception, when they turn eighteen, they feel like, oh, they're just free. And some of them don't show up and not tell us that they're not showing up.
And when they go over, do they get the opportunity to come back and graduate this year?
Yeah, same with homeschoolers, so we might have two homeschoolers that graduate with us this year, so. So yeah, so they, they have that option. And they do, not all of them do it, but a lot of them do. And the year of COVID, we had the year, either, I want to say, classroom, we had like five kids to do the study program. It was just easier for their, for them going on with their lives. But we had like five, and they all came back and graduated on time, so, yeah, so they did.
A lot of seniors coming in wrong. My misinformation. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Director Raha, had his hand up.
Raha, I'll second then.
Quick on the trigger.
Any discussion? No? What do you want us to stick on? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time is five forty-two.